Thank you, everybody, for coming and welcome to the League of Women Voters Richfield 2020 Richfield City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Susan Rosenberg, President of the League of Women Voters Richfield. Sue Sandahl is the moderator and Karen Jenkins is the timekeeper. I'm so pleased to have you all present for this forum. Our forum is now coming to you via virtual platform due to the pandemic. It is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the city's local television station 16 at scheduled times, and the links to YouTube will be provided via social media and each candidate's website so they can be viewed at any time. The League of Women Voters Richfield is a nonpartisan political nonprofit organization that strives to protect citizens' voting rights and deliver unbiased education to voters. League of Women Voters does not endorse candidates for office or political parties. Candidate forums for elections are part of the League of Women Voters Richfield 100-year tradition of helping voters obtain information from candidate stands on issues. As a League of Women voter, Richfield works to grow the vote, protect the vote, and empower the vote. The candidate participation policy plays a vital role in our efforts to protect the vote and empower voters. All candidates were invited to participate, including those who have no opposition. It is the candidate's option whether or not to appear, however, no substitutes or stand-ins will be allowed. If a candidate cannot attend, they may submit a written statement to be read by the moderator, equal in length to the opening statements of the candidates present. The candidates will have an opportunity to make opening and closing statements and express their positions on issues in response to questions from the League of Women Voters Richfield, as well as questions from the general public. Questions were solicited from the public via social media on the League of Women Voters Richfield Facebook page and website, as well as postings on the Richfield Community Facebook page. Questions were checked for relevancy and appropriateness by members of the League of Women Voters Richfield. We are using a random ordered number grid to ask the order of each question. This is so no one is always going to go first or last and always following the same person in answering questions. For the introductory remarks, we are going in alphabetical order and then following a random order for the questions. You have two minutes for your introductory remarks. You have one, all answers will be given a specific time limit. As I said, two minutes for introductions, one minute answering League of Women Voter questions, one minute for answering public questions, and then one minute to summary and wrap up. The moderator will ask the questions and each candidate will respond in order, one at a time. The timekeeper will keep time and show signs at 30 seconds and one minute. Please adhere to these times so that everyone has an opportunity to answer. We have one candidate who is on the phone, and the timekeeper will say when the time is up for that candidate. There will be strict adherence to the time for each answer, and candidates will be given one morning to answer within that time period. Karen will show you the signs, and I think she's already done that, that she will display indicating 30 seconds and when your time is up. When Rand is speaking, Karen will speak the message about the timing. Thank you for your attention, and now I'm going to turn it over to Sue Sandahl, and the first item will be introductions. So Sue, do you want to call on the candidates, please?
I will do that. The introductions are going to be by alphabetical last name order. So the first speaker will be Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. Can everybody just confirm you can hear me okay? Quick nod. Thank you. So my name is Sean Hayford O'Leary. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this and doing this work and having to adapt to a new way of doing this during COVID. It feels like we're kind of shaking up a tradition here. I also want to quick thank my supporters, over 100 individual grassroots donors and dozens of people who've helped me distribute literature, call leaders, make those connections. I'm really grateful for that. I'm proud that we've had a positive and honest campaign about our ideas for making Richfield an even better city. A little bit about me, my family moved here in 1954. They bought the house that I'm in right now. My grandparents, it was the house they could afford that met their family's needs. My mom and I grew up here, and I spent summers going here, Christmas with everything else, and moved full-time here in 2012 to help take care of my grandma. I ended up buying the house after she moved out, and I just have loved being in Richfield. I love being in the neighborhood that my family's been in for three generations. My day job is in web development for small businesses and nonprofits, and I also have a master's degree in city planning. I've done a lot of volunteer work in Richfield. I've been on the planning commission for five years. Two of those years were as chair, another year as vice chair. I've been a representative for bike and walk issues to the Transportation Commission for seven years, and prior to the planning commission, I spent two years at the Human Rights Commission, excluding a year as chair. I've got a good background in showing up for this community and volunteering for this community, and a lot of, I think, knowledge and experience that would be valuable to represent this ward. So I'm ready to field, and I'm ready for this conversation, and I look forward to the rest of this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Onesra San.
Thank you. Bob the Builder could pick up a few pointers from Roy the Mason. My house is a shrine to the man who built it. In the basement workroom, old cigar boxes filled with nuts and bolts, screws and nails, and every description line the shelves. The kitchen linoleum, the tiled basement flooring, the copper pipes, tile work in both bathrooms remain intact and in good condition. Before the destroyers invaded, building inspector and structural engineer searched for but was unable to find more than just a few hairline cracks in the external brickwork. He exclaimed this to be exceptional in a building well over 60 years old. So respectful am I of the house that Roy built, I was unable to erase the penciled-in list on the back door frame to assist his memory. It reads: keys, glasses, money. Because Roy is a skilled craftsman who paid attention to detail, and the house stands sturdy as it protects those within from blizzards, windstorms, heat, and humidity, I seldom use air conditioners, they're not needed. An academic microbiologist and pathologist and his white-collar, blue-collar wife moved into Roy's house. We had no really handyman skills, no problems. The friendly ghosts of Roy and his wife Helen guided and protected us. The home was so sound it needed little maintenance.
30 seconds, Rand, 30 seconds.
When city managed mayors, commissioners, councilpersons attended a meeting called by employees of a phantom investment group, my neighbors and I were told that the deals were done. What was left for us to do was to either move out or grin and bear it and come to pass that no amount of pleading would be accommodated. The stately landmark on 66th and Russell and Queen avenues, along with the large yard full of old oak trees, were destroyed. Okay, well, I'll have to continue when I get next time to speak. It's another one half a minute.
All right, Mr. Troutman, you are next. Mr. Troutman, you are next.
He's muted.
Yeah, we can't hear him.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Jane, can you unmute Simon?
He's not muted in my, on my thing. It says he's, he's good.
Is your speaker on? Is your microphone on?
I heard that. Was that him saying hello?
He may have gone out and back again.
Oh, hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you. I can, I can hear you now.
Okay, we can't see you now, but we can hear you. There we go.
Part of, part of our COVID landscape here. Good evening, everybody. My name's Simon Troutman, and I'm the Ward One City Council member. I, I'm, I'm a third-generation Richfielder. I'm raising the fourth generation of Richfielders here in the home that I grew up in. When we started our family, we bought our first home in Richfield, and it's such an honor to be a part of this, of this community. In, in my day job, I'm a small business owner and an attorney, and I feel every, every day the weight and the honor of both representing clients and representing my team members and making sure that, that, that they have, they have their, their needs met. It's one of the great privileges of my life to participate in the city life and community life of, of Richfield. To do it as a council member means I get the privilege of seeing when small businesses come to life and businesses that were, that were dark are full of, are full of entrepreneurs and, and make policy changes that people, both, both make people's lives better and in ways that people just don't see and don't notice at all. And they just have a frictionless experience with their, with their local government. So I'm really grateful to the League of Women Voters hosting this forum. I'm really proud to be a League of Women Voters member. They don't just host this forum, but folks that are unfamiliar with the League, they're really keen and critical in helping the community have lots of conversations about public policy issues, and grateful for the time to talk about issues and learn, learn from colleagues and candidates and, and hopefully have a very fruitful discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vizecki.
Hi, Gordon Waziski here. Thank you so much for hosting this forum. It's, I think, an excellent way for voters to get informed. While I've lived in Richfield for the past 20 years, prior to that, I actually grew up in a small town in southwestern Minnesota, about 1,000 people in my hometown, and grew up to, you know, lower-middle class or upper-lower class, depending on how you're classified, parents couldn't help me when it came time to go to college. So I self-funded by working and borrowing my way through undergrad, working and borrowing my way through law school. I know what it is to struggle. There was one year when I was going to college that I actually had six W-2s. So the, and, and many of those were simultaneous. So I know what it is to, to exist on varying levels of the socioeconomic ladder. I, I know what it is to be in the shoes of many of the residents in our community. I'm currently a practicing lawyer, and as I said, I've lived in the community for 20 years. Prior to that, I lived in South Minneapolis for four years, and I vastly prefer Richfield. My quiet street on Bryant Avenue experiences less car traffic than the main street in my small hometown. So that being said, I also have the skills necessary to function and really maximize the benefit for Richfield. I have 18 years of city commission experience, decades of nonprofit foundation experience, and I'm an active volunteer in the community. Many years I'm volunteering between 800 and 1,000 hours, between coaching sports, I'm scout master for the local, one of our local Boy Scout units, now recently scouting units because we've added a girls' group as well. So I've got the experience, the runway, and the know-how to be, to help Richfield be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. My name's Ben Whalen. I am the Ward Three councilperson. I've been in office for not even quite two years yet, and I'm running again because there's, there's more work to do. And so I, I live with my wife in the, kind of by Roosevelt Park on Clinton Avenue near 76, that we, I, I'm actually only a four-year Richfield resident, but just fell in love with it as soon as I started working here, moved here and rented for a bit. And really what got me involved in local politics was, there's a local housing team that I was very honored to be part of, of renters and homeowners working around affordable housing, and I was just struck by, by how much of a difference we could make working together as residents, but how infrequently people took advantage of that, that there's, there's a real opportunity in local politics to make a difference, that it doesn't take a lot, it's not the same as, as state or national government, that we really can create the, the community we want to live in. And so it was empowering to be part of that, and that I ran and am running again because I want to make sure that the people who are most directly impacted by issues get a chance to have a say in how those come out. And, and really, I think the biggest area we need to work that I'm sure we'll talk about more in future questions is around equity and making sure that everyone has a chance to thrive in Richfield. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next question reads as follows: Minnesota has stark racial inequities in income, education, and homeownership. What are your ideas for reducing and eliminating these inequities? And our first speaker is Mr. Troutman.
Thank you. So I think one of the, there are a number of ways to enter into this conversation. One of the critical ways to enter this conversation is to realize how we build our city. And I was not aware until probably four or five years ago, and I think it's still not widely known that when we built our city, we built the city with racial covenants in many, many of our homes, which meant if you were a person of color, if you were Latino, if you were, if you're black, if you were Jewish, you were not allowed to purchase a home. I know when our family moved here 30 years ago, my, my mother, who's Puerto Rican, neighbors, neighbors had comments about whether or not you fit, and I see my time's running out. Starting that conversation there, addressing the homeownership gap, addressing issues of really a fundamental trust between law enforcement, different experiences that different community members have, and making sure that our city reflects our values and reflects who lives here now.
Thank you. Mr. Vizecki.
Thank you. It's challenging to solve, you know, basically all of the world's inequities within, you know, 36,000 or 37,000 people. I think the city plays an important role, city council plays an important role, but it's a partnership across many organizations. There are nonprofits, it's the school system, it's, it's all of the institutions of our community working together to provide opportunity, opportunity for people, excuse me. Because that opportunity, that, that hope is what gives people the motivation to try, it's what leads people to believe that they're supported, and it's what really, I think, can be the catalyst to the jumping of socioeconomic layers, the, the ability to work one's way up. And I think it's, it's the American dream, and it's part of what's happening daily in Richfield, and I think we've really done a lot to support that.
Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. I'll talk a bit about the, the income piece. I think in many ways that our, our system, I think we just need to acknowledge that we, as a country, we, when we were founded, it was for white male property owners, that that's who, who our country was built for, that, and so of course, we're still going to be dealing with some of those inequities. I think specifically around the income inequities, I've been happy to work with, and I certainly am not alone in this, but work with the rest of our council and our local regional unions. We just passed a prevailing wage ordinance and some protections that'll help against wage theft for lower-wage construction workers, where that's a huge issue. And then I'm sure I'm going to talk more about housing in another question, so I'll come back to that, but obviously need to, need to make housing as a place for, for people to call Richfield home, that they can actually afford.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. I will jump into housing quickly just to focus on one area. I will, of course, say that strong and well-funded schools are important, but housing is something we have the ability to influence on the city council. And I appreciated the importance of what Mr. Troutman mentioned of our history of some redlining, and I want to emphasize that even though the legal barriers have gone away, we still have real barriers to being able to live in Richfield if you are lower income. I think it's important that we have options available at all income levels that, as a result, make it available for people of all backgrounds. That includes high-income housing as well as low-income and affordable housing. I also think transportation choice is a really important thing. Low-income families and families of color are more likely to share cars, and when we have a transportation system that requires every worker to own a car that costs about $10,000 a year to own, it limits their ability to have stable income and to accumulate wealth. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Onesra San.
In 1985, my husband joined me in the United States. He has four university degrees, three from the University of Minnesota and one from Madison. And when he joined me here in the United States, after being a full professor in, in Africa, he was able to find one job, and that was cleaning the floors in the little store across the way from where we lived.
30 seconds.
So I think this is something that, it's not going to be handled in any discussion where I have one minute to speak, but there's a lot of work to be done, that's for sure. And we've been plugging away at it, this little family of mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question: How big of a problem is racially disparate treatment of people of color by Richfield police? What are your thoughts on reducing and eliminating these inequities? And the first speaker on this one is Ms. Onesra San.
I think that there should be something close to elimination of internal affairs. The police, I suppose, are by and large, and I have no reason to doubt it, honest and God-fearing, and they have an awful job, but they shouldn't police themselves. They, they don't, they're not good at it. They, they can't call one another out.
30 seconds.
If there's, if there's somebody up on the top who's not doing what he should, or he should be doing, the lower people on the totem pole are not going to call that person out. So I think that we have to externalize the internal affairs departments of the police.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate Ruane's comment. This is a lot to cover in a minute, but a couple of things I'll state. I think one area, a lot of people have been talking about this as defunding the police, but I think the, one of the concepts behind that, I mean, people mean different things, but one of the concepts behind that is funding different approaches to emergency situations. And I think I was proud to be part of a step forward in that regard in Richfield in hiring an embedded social worker, so that we have someone to reach out when mental health is the, the reason for crisis and not, not necessarily something that's going to take someone with a gun showing up. I think there's also a lot of opportunities to partner with our state leaders, and I was proud to, to speak with our representative, Michael Howard, about changes so that there can be greater accountability, greater consequences when officers do act out of turn, and changes to, it's not exciting, but to the arbitration process that need to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
So first, first want to acknowledge that people have really different experiences with the police in our community, and I know a lot of positive experiences personally. I've had 911 situations with my grandma, and personally, it was a good experience and a positive experience, and I do important work. But I also want to acknowledge that it's absolutely not everyone's experience. I've certainly heard from people on the campaign trail about negative experiences. I don't believe that Richfield Police is unique in this area, but I do believe that we have problems like other communities. I've worked with Allison Holberg, who was previously on the planning commission with me, to analyze the arrest data of Richfield Police, which does include race of the person arrested, and approximately five times more likely to be black or relative to the overall population of Richfield of those who were arrested. That, that's just something that, that is a red flag for me, and I think it's something that invites analysis. So one immediate thing I would like to see us do is start recording demographic data for all traffic stops, because we currently only have it for arrests. We really can't act on the problem if we don't know what the problem is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vizecki.
So I, for one, was really proud to be a Richfielder. This summer, when the headline came out about the mistaken felony arrest, I actually sort of watched with a little bit of dread and anticipation the, the footage that was released, and I'm so glad that Richfield had the foresight to release the dash cam footage, because the recounting of the events was really different than the actual events. And in this case, you know, what I saw when I watched the video was an extremely respectful interaction between one of our law enforcement officers, no jumping to conclusions, no other friction, respectful interaction, and in the end, you know, a situation where, you know, the individual was able to, to fix the warrant and hopefully remove that problem in the future. So I, I think there is some anecdotal information. We have had instances where officers who were involved in bad situations should have been let go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Troutman.
Thank you. Yep, briefly, in 60 seconds, building on some of the comments that Councilmember Whalen mentioned, Richfield has, has worked hard to push forward the Officer Integrity Act, which gives cities the tools they need when officers violate their, their integrity, violate their oath to be able to terminate them. That empowers not just the city and not just the community, but reflects well on excellent officers when we have the tools we need to, to, to let officers go that are not strong fits. Also additionally, while a, you know, the candid brooks up anecdotal evidence, I think there's great data and, and great evidence, and certainly a lot of comments that I've heard as a council member, where there is a gap in treatment and, and reception with individuals of color, I see my time's running out, but being able to continue to make more spaces where we can have that, especially at a policy level with the council, those conversations. That's my time.
Thank you. All right, next question. I think I've gotten through everyone. The next question is about COVID. The economic impact of COVID-19 may cause issues with the city budget. What are your budget priorities and where would you cut funds if necessary? And the first speaker for this one is Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. I was very happy to see that this year we did not face a need for drastic cuts. I know some communities are already seeing that, and I think, I think the reality is that we too often in government are given the choice of, like, telling us we have to choose between one thing or the other. We're a wealthy state. We have, like, we as a community, as a city, cannot raise revenue in the same way that the state can, but I think that too often, we're given false choices. So I don't think, if we come to that point, I'll be open about it and figure out what we need to do, but I'm confident that if our state, and I'm working in my day job to help with that, if our state raises revenue in the way that we need to and supports us in the way that we need, I don't think we're going to need to make drastic cuts, and I don't think that cuts are the, the right move for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Vizecki.
So first of all, I think it's important to preserve essential services. So as we're looking at the community, if, you know, I certainly hope that Councilmember Whalen is right, that money shows up from the state and we don't have any problems. If we do, I think there, you know, it requires a certain amount of prioritization, making sure that we have all the lights on, all of the water and sewer working properly, all of the public safety covered. And then at that point, you know, it's, it's down to hard choices, and as someone who's worked in a large corporation, dealing with budgetary issues and managing really challenging times, I have the experience to help with those tough decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Onesra San.
Our water pipes are 60 years old, and we're, we're running helter-skelter when we have to patch up here and patch up there for the storm sewers. The most important-
The most important thing to do is get the water, keep the water clean and running for our homeowners and businesses. Groundwater is polluted. That groundwater can go up through, the vapor's going to go up through your cement foundations.
Thirty seconds.
The budget should be cut for beautifying streets. Look underneath your streets. They're dirty and they need help. And just forget about beautifying the streets right now.
Thank you. Mr. Troutman?
Thank you. I think, I think whenever you're in leadership, we always have, we're always faced with challenging choices. But I think some of the most important choices are the choices that we made years ago. And so it's not just that we have a crisis that's upon us now. I'm really grateful for our staff that we've gone through a significant recession in the last decade, and we still have institutional knowledge and leadership that was here when the state eliminated state aid a decade ago, and we were left in a terrible position. So I'm really proud of the prudence and the foresight, not just that the council's had, but the council and collaboration with staff has had to make some prudent decisions on the front end so we can avoid a crisis, and we're not in a crisis. But I think long-term, we have huge infrastructure projects. We do have our roads that need to be replaced twice a century, and we're in the midst of that. But some of the big decisions we may need to make, and we're already making, is how do we slow those projects down? How do we stagger them so we avoid a crisis, so we can keep city service? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to note, in general, 70% of our city revenue comes from property taxes. And I think compared to a lot of communities that rely on things like local sales tax or renting convention centers and that sort of thing, we're in a fairly good position with COVID to not see serious budget impacts. Were we to come upon that, I would want to have an honest conversation about, is the right approach to cut budgets? Because the reality is, we do run pretty lean. We are a pretty efficient city government. But do we want to cut city services that are important to people, or do we want to raise revenues? Ultimately, in general, I hope for the third way, which is continuing to grow our tax base so we get the city services people like, that they're stable in hard economic times, and that taxes are reasonable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from the public. What is your position on environmental sustainability? And what do you see as the city's role in addressing climate change? And the first speaker is Mr. Vazeki.
So I think the, there are huge motivations at the federal level from a tax benefit perspective, as well as at the state level, to encourage businesses to attempt to reach carbon neutrality. And I think that type of influence is really strong and is really important, and will actually generate more progress than city efforts. That being said, I think the city's efforts to install solar panels, seeing that show up in our public schools, seeing the attempts to offset energy consumption at that level is really important. Because the other, the other methods, especially looking at recent transportation surveys, the other methods just aren't producing the results. We've been building bike infrastructure, but we're at less than 1% of utilization. And that's with a summer observation, completely ignoring the winter side. So it's really important that we have good buildings, good infrastructure, and the state and federal programs are really going to help.
Thank you. Ms. Onesra San?
Cutting down and gutting 66 Queen Russell area of all of its old oak trees so that we could put up the monstrosity that is there now was not a good idea. Ripping out the tree that's in Lund's parking lot, which is a beautiful tree and a joy to look at, is not a good idea. Just ripping down trees, trees give us breath. You know, they filter out, they give us what we need, not the carbons. They give us the oxygen. So save the trees. I hate to be a tree hugger. I know it's a cliche, but save the trees.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. I think there are a few things that we could think about. One, of course, is leading by example, making sure that our city buildings are efficient, things like solar panels, things like our plug-in hybrids that we're using for inspections and other purposes. I think those are important. I think we can also influence policy, because, of course, the city is much larger than the city government itself. I think addressing trash hauling is important, particularly making sure that everybody has access to curbside organics, and we can significantly reduce our waste and the energy associated with that. I believe alternative transportation is important. Of course, bicycling is part of that, but mass transit is another important way. We have new transit lines coming in. I want to be sure that we are set to take advantage of that. And I also want to say an important part is growing in proximity to those transit lines, and even in proximity to jobs, because when people are driving less from A to B, that's fewer greenhouse gases out, and it's more time spent on things that people care about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. The, deciding where to start, because we literally just had a work session. I was excited that we now have a climate action plan as a city. I don't think it's been formally voted on yet, but it's got 81 action steps to take. I think some of the big ones are ones that Mr. Hayford O'Leary mentioned. I think transit is huge. I think organizing hauling makes sense, both in reducing the, reducing the emissions and, I mean, the damage on our roads from the number of trucks going, but also that organics in landfills is a huge releaser of methane. And so that is a big part of it. And then I think there's a lot of great points in there, too, about how we manage our park systems, how we can encourage businesses to, businesses and residents to take advantage of alternative energy sources. So yeah, I think the city can play a big role, and I'm excited to keep working on that together.
Thank you. Next question. Do you support organized trash collection and recycling, including organic? Did I miss someone?
Yes.
I did. I am so sorry. Mr. Troutman, you are the last one to speak. Go ahead.
Hey. Thank you, Ms. Sandall. Now, real quick, in addition to the action items that the city's taken, something that Councilmember Whalen didn't mention is that we've created a Sustainability Commission that he's actually the liaison to. And there, we have an army of volunteers that are speaking into policy, and we're really grateful for all our commissions, but we're glad that we have that as priority. Something else that I've learned in my role as a council member is just becoming aware of how climate change impacts not just our local infrastructure, but our infrastructure in the region. So things like increased precipitation impact places like Wood Lake that are now flooding more. And as we're looking to the next decade, how do we make that sustainable? When we look at our infrastructure in 494 and how we update that, those create challenges that are in order of magnitude greater. And so being able to be aware of that, knowledgeable of that, speak into those, frame those, and then make that a priority for the city is part of the privilege we have as council members and city leaders.
Thank you. I'll try again. This is the sixth question. Do you support organized trash collection and recycling, including organic recycling? Why or why not? And the first speaker on this one is Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
Short answer is yes. I think this is an important step for us to take. I think it's, I know that people feel strongly, more strongly than you might think about trash. I certainly want to address critics of organized trash collection and make sure that whatever we do provides the same quality of service they like. It was certainly interesting watching St. Paul voting on this and seeing that, like, 70% of voters ultimately wanted this. I will certainly be closely watching a similar vote in Bloomington. But the bottom line is, it's a complete waste of city resources to be having all these heavy trucks on our streets, polluting our air, damaging our pavement. One study indicated that streets wear out five to 10 years sooner when we have individual haulers. I know in my own alley and a recycling mate, we've got up to 18 trucks going. It's a burden on most city residents. I want to have high-quality trash service. I want to be sure it's affordable, but I do think organized is the way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
Yes, I absolutely support this. I haven't been able, because of COVID, to do much door knocking this time around, but when I door knocked 3,000 some homes in my first campaign, this issue, more than anything, I kept asking open-ended questions about people's vision for Richfield, or what do you want to see different in five years from now? And this, more than anything, was people's first response, that they want organized hauling, that people have been asking for it for years, that it makes sense. I've never lived in any other community that does it the way we do. So I think there is, there's certainly things to consider in the change of making sure people don't get charged extra fees for the change, making sure that the transition is smooth, that we get good information and communication out there. But I think this is absolutely the right move. And so I'm glad that we're currently slated to start working on that in the spring.
Thank you. Mr. Vazeki?
I think there's a lot of really good economic and community sustainability reasons why we would go organized. I do, though, look at what went down in St. Paul and look at how it was originally managed in Bloomington to date. And just from a, from an overall resident perspective, I'm concerned about the amount of resources that we're going to spend, the amount of dollars we're going to spend if we do it wrong. So I'm supportive of the concept. I'm a little skeptical when we remove competition from a marketplace, and it's really up to the city to make sure that we strike the right deal for residents. But I do think, I mean, it makes a lot of sense. It's just we don't, we don't want to step in any traps to make it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Troutman?
Thank you. I think I tend to agree with what other colleagues have mentioned here. I think it makes sense from a sustainability standpoint and an economic standpoint. I also agree we should not do it wrong. But I'd also say that, as divisive as it's been in our neighbors, just making sure we have a conversation about this. I think we've had a healthy conversation. I haven't seen the level of divisiveness here at Richfield, but just if people feel really passionately about it, and making sure that we move forward together as a city is important.
Thank you. Ms. Onesra San?
Well, in the world where big business and franchises and lots and lots of corporate management of our lives, I was happy to change my garbage hauler, and I saved almost a third or more for three years before they started to raise their rates, too. I like, I like competition. I thoroughly realize why, you know, you don't want 12 different garbage trucks going up the road, but that's what we have.
Thirty seconds.
So I'm torn. I can't make up my mind. I like competition. It's so rare nowadays.
Thank you. Next question. What are your thoughts on redevelopment that meets the needs of the modern Richfield, especially the future of the hub area? What influence does the city have when private property is sold and the new owner decides to redevelop? What limitations does the city face in working with a developer? And this is a pretty in-depth question, and so we will give you two minutes each for this question. Thank you. And our first speaker here is Ms. Onesra San.
Okay, I'd like to finish my introductory speech, which is topical to this. I can, I'll try to read where I left off. When city mayors, commissioners, councilpersons attended a meeting called by employers of a phantom investment group, my neighbors and I were told that deals were done. What was left for us to do was either to move out or to grin and bear it, and it came to pass that no amount of pleading would be accommodated. The stately landmark on 66th and Russell and Queen avenues, along with a large yard full of oak trees, were destroyed. Up came a slapped-together monstrosity made of glue and wood chips, which, and what looks like tissue paper. The autistic, the paralytics, and those with Down Syndrome, as well as the very elderly and the school kids, are tormented by constant, by constant ear-splitting, beeping, crashing noises. When COVID-19 raised its ugly head, I pleaded again with city officials, with subcontractors, with state and federal public officials, all turned to death ear. I told them, if it were your mother, would you want the unmasked, the untested, and the non-distancing to have free rein over your backyard, over her backyard? Or would you have them cuddled up to your preschoolers? These so-called builders are unworthy to tie the shoelaces of the man who built my house, Roy. He and his wife are my good spirits, and they live in my house with me.
Thirty seconds.
That's it. I'm over it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Troutman.
Thank you. With regards, and this question is specifically with regards to the hub, correct?
It's for the hub. Let me read it again. It's a long question, so if you want to take notes, feel free. What are your thoughts on redevelopment that meets the needs of the modern Richfield, especially the future of the hub area? What influence does the city have when private property is sold and the new owner decides to redevelop? What limitations does the city face in working with a developer? Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you. So to answer the question of what limitations the city, the city faces, some of the limitations are when the city doesn't own the property, we have less influence over the property. What's important for the city, particularly when it comes to the hub? One of the challenges with the hub that I learned before I became a city council member is that it's owned by a large real estate investment trust that holds a lot of similar properties, and previously it had no interest in investing in the improvement of the property. And so part of the influence that the city can have is making strategic investments in infrastructure that surround properties like that, that make it more attractive for reinvestment. In fact, I think we saw a lot of fruit of that, and in the last two years, they had changed their priority from letting that, that property just degrade itself to looking to make significant investments. When I was first elected, I sat down with Kristin Asher, our Public Works Director, and she explained that the reason there are not any structures in that parking lot in the back of the hub area is because we actually have Public Works, we have Water Works underneath that parking lot. And one of my first questions was, does Bricksmore know that we're rebuilding that road, and that as we rebuild that road, we're going to have to rebuild that infrastructure? To one of the other candidates' points, we are, in fact, rebuilding that infrastructure that is part of our plan. And so being able to ask questions like that and make developers aware of the strategic investments we are making to make sure our infrastructure is first-rate, can help us rebuild and restructure and well-position ourselves to have healthy, sustainable development, particularly in the area of the hub.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
Thank you. I think, as was already stated, that when, when we don't own the property, we have fewer levers. But I think we, as a city, have been operating from a stance of not wanting to limit development, which I don't think is bad. But I think the context we're in now, and we will have to see how COVID changes that, but the context we're in now is that we've had, like, hundreds of millions of dollars of development for years in a row, and that we, we went from having nearly nothing for two or three decades to now having a lot. And so I think we're at a place where we can expect more and even require more from developers if they want to build here, that before we offer city funding, that we can increase the expectation of what kinds of affordable housing they built, of what quality of structures they're building, of what amenities they're offering. I think specifically with the hub, I would like to see, and I think at one point, and the owner has been kind of going back and forth, but at one point, certainly, they were expressing a desire to put in some mixed use there, to still have some retail, some community, like a destination to come shop. I'd love to see a grocery store back there again, but also adding in some, some housing or some offices, just acknowledging that our, the world for retail is not what it was, that we don't need as much retail space, but that we can have it there, have other things, like good uses for the community as well, and then make it more of a destination that looks modern, where people can, can come and enjoy, that's got good landscaping, maybe even public art. But that's kind of the vision I would love to see for, for the hub. And in the rest of the development, we're seeing that I'd, I'd love to continue seeing, seeing and demanding development of what our community needs, not always just waiting for what developers are willing to build.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. We'll start talking about the hub, and depending on how we're doing with time, make some more general comments. So I kind of want to pick on almost everybody who's spoken so far, because I get really sick and tired, really, of the city explanation that this, you know, it's why I believe that this, you know, it's why I believe on, we don't own it, we can't do anything about it. That isn't the standard the city has used in planning any other area. We've done some really pretty, I might want to say extreme planning, but aggressive planning of areas where there are private property owners, and we express a long-term vision as a city for that site. And I think it's important that we'd be doing the same with the hub site. Obviously, we can't take their property, we need to work with them, but we need to have clear city vision, and we need to have our ducks in a row to make sure that we can get high-quality development. And we absolutely have not done that. I expressed a lot of disappointment in our comprehensive plan process, that rather than do a detailed small-area plan, in the spirit, in the level of detail that we've done for 66th and Lyndale over the past decades, we did one meeting thing where people were shown two posters and given posted notes to vote on it. We need a lot more details of a process to think about what the community wants, and then ultimately, what the city is willing to do to make that happen. So I think step one is a detailed small-area plan. My own personal perspective on the hub is that I would love to see it become a mix of housing and retail and office, but that's one perspective of 35,000. I want to be sure that we are getting many people to the table to make sure that this is a long-term redevelopment that will serve us in the future. And again, figure out to what extent we're willing to support that and able to support that, if that means subsidies for affordable housing, or even simply buying park land. There are a bunch of different options, and we'll need to figure that out together. 66th and Lyndale did not just happen, it really did take decades of work. We need to start that process for 66th and Nicollet and ensure that this is development that meets the community's needs in terms of what they want to see and meets our tax base needs for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vazeki?
So the redevelopment of the hub, I don't share already the yellow sign?
No.
It is a real challenge. So if you have privately-held property, yes, the city can essentially complain to the point where somebody might do something. But the reality is, most of these properties, especially this one held, as Mr. Troutman mentioned, by Bricksmore, a publicly traded company that has assets and the benefits of those assets, they're a property management company, they're not a development company. Any improvements they make to the site, they're going to pass on, because the retail leases let them pass those costs on to the individual renters on a per-square-footage basis. Mall-based economics are really, really challenging. And what we can do, if we do put an extreme amount of pressure and we're successful at getting an upgrade, it actually is going to make it more likely that those existing tenants won't succeed. One of the reasons why the hub has the occupancy level it does is because it's got relatively inexpensive rents, it presents good opportunities for small businesses to move in. I would like to see full occupancy. I'd like to see a grocery store back on the site or a refresh. But I'm tempering that want with the economic reality that it's each one of those small businesses that's currently there that's going to pay the price, because there isn't going to be an out-of-pocket remodel by a company like Bricksmore. It is absolutely passed on. And if we're going to have a successful business community, putting more drag on their operations is not the way to do it. Long term, I think if there's an indication that they want to do something, great. We can, at that point, work on what the plan looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last person on that question. Next question. What can the city do to improve access to mental health support for Richfield students and residents? And the first speaker is Mr. Troutman.
Thank you. Well, I think first, I'd like to start by saying how proud I am of the work we have done in the last several years to be more accessible and more responsive to people with mental health issues. One of those is, I think Councilmember Whalen alluded to, is part of how we look at policing in the 21st century, we've made an investment and collaboration with the county, and appreciate our mayor and chief of police in making it a priority for us to have a senior social worker, not a new social worker, a senior social worker as a part of that team. We've also had a dementia-friendly city initiative to make our city a safe and welcoming place for folks with dementia. And I think what it means for individuals to be able to feel safe in their own community as they enter into dementia is, I'm really proud of the work we started and proud of how we're going to continue that.
Thank you. Mr. Vazeki?
So I think whatever it is we do is in conjunction with the school system. The question, you know, specifically referred to, how does the city partner with the school? And there's an extensive partnership there. There's joint facilities, there's the, you know, the resource officers that are in the schools. So there's a long history and a rich history of cooperation between the city and the schools, and I think that should continue. And part of that would be not presuming that we have the answer, but the city, or rather, the school system is in touch with those kids on a daily basis and is able to identify issues, able to identify opportunities. And I think it's up to the city to be the corresponding piece that sort of matches together with the need in order to really provide the best solution.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford O'Leary?
I'll be honest, this is largely a new topic for me. I'm actually learning things from my fellow speakers. I certainly think policing and ensuring that we are able to respond to things appropriately when there are acute situations with mental health is very important. And being able to refer people, whether it's to the schools or to private options, to support that is important. Beyond that, I'm all ears to what the community would want and what would be a best practice for this. Thank you.
Ms. Onesra San?
Support and encourage intergenerational cooperation without the interference of the middleman. There is a population of elderly who could benefit by housing, live-in assistance. Equally important are the youngsters needing housing. When individuals are not on the brink of extinction, their mental health gets a lot better.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Whalen?
On this, I'd say it is an area that the city has not done as much with, that traditionally, I mean, the school board decides what works in the school. We certainly, I would say, we actually have not had that thriving of a partnership up until recently with the schools, but I've been really excited to see that growing and improving. And then the county offers human services as well. And so one thing that I would say, certainly I need to grow in, now that I've been doing this a couple of years, is understanding how we relate to other jurisdictions, and that the county offers a lot of services for people looking for mental health supports, especially if they're not able to afford finding something on their own. And so I think just understanding what resources there are, and then having things like our social worker now in the police department, having more abilities to connect people with those resources that exist.
Thank you. Okay, so we have covered that one. The next is a question from the public. Please discuss your approach to affordable housing in the city of Richfield. And the first speaker on this topic would be Ms. Onesra San.
Well, it's supply and demand again. When you have housing and you have people, we like to get them together. If you have really, really poor people, they end up in Powderhorn Park. If you have people who are determined that they're going to build monstrosities on my corner, and they're going to get $1,600 or $1,700 for an efficiency, that doesn't seem to be looking at affordable housing. Let's move the people from Powderhorn Park into those big apartment buildings, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
The first thing I'd say in this area is that we've been having this conversation as a city for years, and I think that's great, and we need to continue it. But that too often, the voice of renters themselves is not part of it, or the perspective of renters themselves is not where we start, that we talk about what is possible or what the barriers are, which are all important things to know, but we don't start from a place of what are renters experiencing? What can they afford? What do we have? And that in partnering with groups like V, partnering with renters directly, that what we are hearing is that we need larger units, we need more handicap-accessible units, we need more deeply affordable, that we can't call something affordable if half of our renters in town can't afford it. And so I think continuing to, as I said, demand more from our developers and expect more, and then find ways to utilize the resources we have to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Troutman?
Yeah, I think, again, training is really important. And so understanding that for single-family homeowners, we have received over a billion dollars in wealth aggregatively created for homeowners since the last recession, $500 million in the last several years. And so that creates a lot of opportunities for homeowners. Simultaneously, it creates huge burdens for renters. People are seeing their rent going up 30%, 40%, even 70% or more. So that's a good place for our community. A lot of people, I think, are still not aware of that, understanding that. Things that we've done, in addition to inclusionary housing policies, just making sure that we're adding some affordable housing, has been really an important project that I led, was creating an opportunity for renters who want to purchase homes. We now have a down payment assistance program for renters who are part of Richfield who want to become homeowners. They now have an opportunity to get some help. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford O'Leary?
And sorry, could you just repeat the question? I just thought I might have misheard it.
Sure. It says, "This question is from the public. Please discuss your approach to affordable housing in the city of Richfield."
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you know, I mentioned that my family moved here in 1954. Again, it was the house that they could afford that met their needs. I think affordable housing is our legacy as a city, and responding to our need to affordable housing is part of who we are as Richfielders, and it's still part of who we are. A big reason why we were a hot market for ownership was that we had so many affordable starter homes. I just met a new neighbor who purchased one a block over. Certainly, affordable rentals and affordable apartments are also very important, and we also have a duty to be responsive to that. I think one of our biggest problems is that we simply didn't build for a very long time. Between 2000 and 2018, we built one building with 90 units in it. It was an incredible lag, and we are seeing a lot of change right now, but it is really catching up for a period of not building. So I support new, preferably mixed-income housing options. I certainly support the ownership encouragement options that we have, but we need to respond to the needs of all residents, including renters. And I think providing new housing options is something that's imperative for our residents as well as for another tax base. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vazeki?
So the most recent comp plan, I think, was, did a really good job of highlighting that Richfield is 30% affordable right now based on the standards that are set up for communities like us. We're actually in the top five. The challenge, though, is the recent effort to prevent mass eviction or to prevent displacement, and the ordinances that were passed to prevent that, actually ended up serving to, I think, inhibit what the natural market reaction would have been to upgrading those sites. So we have a whole bunch of really old multi-unit, and we've now sort of cut off the ability to have those evolve and improve. And I think programs like the Minneapolis Land Trust and the one that Simon mentioned, where we work on transitioning people into our affordable single-family homes, is, those are really good programs to have for our community.
Thank you. All right. The next question is also from the public. It says, "Engagement and transparency, especially in the age of COVID, is a particularly big challenge. What do you think Richfield does well now to engage citizens, and what changes would you like to make to ensure citizens from all walks of life can engage and be informed?" And the first speaker on this one is Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. This is a big passion of mine, and I think we've done some things well and some things not so well since COVID and even before. I think one of the huge areas we need to improve is in our proactive, like, reaching out. I think we tend to do fairly well in creating opportunities for people to come to us and share input, especially in terms of, like, one-time input. But in terms of going out to where people already are, meeting with groups that already gather, and getting input, and then following up and working in partnership with community groups is something we need to work on. I've also made a big push for more, our commission meetings, our council meetings and work sessions to be more accessible, for, like, for them to be recorded and put online for both before and after, that that wasn't happening even when we were meeting in person. And so just making sure that people can access the meetings that we're having.
Thank you. Ms. Onesra San?
I agree with that 100%. I had to call the City Hall many times and write letters and insist that the meetings be held in a democratic fashion. The council took themselves off of Channel 16. When they went off of that, they eliminated my access to any public
-- Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
-- public hearing or public meeting. And I'm sure that there are many of us who cannot get access to the web. So we were pretty much left out.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford O'Leary?
Thank you. I think one thing that we do well is that we do have excellent access to our city council members and to our city staff. I think it is a lot like a small-town experience of being able to call somebody and deal with a problem. I think our current council handles that well, and I would certainly be committed to handling that well if I were elected. I do think we have work to do and work that we've done recently. I think flexibility and boarding commission participation is really important. A few years ago, I was able to help defeat a staff proposal that would have set strict requirements for physical in-person attendance to those boarding commission meetings that would have excluded a lot of people with more obligation. I think with COVID, we're learning on our feet new ways to participate, and I would love to see us continue that after that and allow virtual participation and other means of boarding commission participation. I also want to quickly mention, I think we have work to do with development things, particularly of this gap between something being reviewed at a work session that people don't hear about, people hear about it only at the final approval, when it's almost too late to make any changes. We need to make sure that people are informed throughout the process and that they understand the trade-offs and understand that it's the same things the city is considering so they can have a meaningful seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vazeki?
So I think the digital divide in our community is real. You know, we do have a pretty substantial aging population that just doesn't have access to the information about what's going on from a city government perspective. The tiny print at the back of the sun current once a week isn't enough to get somebody to be educated on what's going on in the community. And without other types of outreach, I think we're really limited. The city does really well for folks who are connected or folks who are looking for information, but to the extent that people aren't on Facebook, aren't on other groups, there's almost no chance they're actually going to find out about developments in the community unless there's the problems that Mr. Hayford O'Leary mentioned, which is, you get down to the last couple of stages, and the neighborhood realizes what's going on, and they want to step in and they want their say. And we've sort of built a process that's already dead-ended before they get there, and that's an incredible disservice to our residents.
Thank you. And Mr. Troutman?
Thank you. Well, one of the things we did since I've been elected, prior to a couple of years ago, we actually had no full-time communications staff. And so in the 21st century, just making a decision to say, we're going to invest, and we have 1.5 full-time staff members that are now just working on expanding that communication, I think has been helpful. Like other folks have mentioned, being able to communicate folks earlier and often, and especially when developments or changes are happening, in writing, in mailboxes, in signs, in signs that we put in people's yards. We're always learning, we're always getting better. I still love the fact, I tell folks, I'm the customer service representative for the government for 10,000 of my neighbors. I think it's amazing that my cell phone, our cell phones are on the website, that in addition to all that, people that in addition to all that, people are free, not just to call the city, but they can call their neighbor and get a response. And even though I recognize that's reactive, it's still a privilege and a pleasure, and I'm glad to do it.
Thank you. Next question. What can or should the city do to help support the school district during this difficult time of remote learning for students? And the first speaker is Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. I think in general, flexibility for the school district as they complete their buildings, building projects is important. I was noticing just some use of our public spaces, doing textbook drop-off and so on, using our public streets. I think that's important as well. And certainly allowing use of our parks to complete social distance activity and to be able to expand that during, during the school, to meet the school needs is important. Thank you.
Mr. Whelan.
Yeah, I have a few ideas. I know some of the ways we've partnered already that I think are great. And again, I think this partnership really has taken off in the last, like, three, four years, even before I joined council. Is the, the summer, we partnered with them on the meal programs that our, especially our rec department has been partnering with the school district a lot, that we had offered some free meals in parks in the summer. They were offering the free meals, and so they had combined those efforts. Another great program is that where our city and the school district partner a lot is the Safe Routes to School program. So I know as they've been doing the hybrid learning, our public works department and the school district have been working on getting crossing guards, volunteers to help kids get to school. And so I think, I think continuing to find, even if they're little ways, those ways that we can partner and support one another is just absolutely huge.
Thank you. Mr. Vazeki.
So I've had good relationships, you know, with all three of the recent superintendents, you know, Dr. Devlin and Bob Schlotterbach, and, and now Superintendent Unowski. And, and I think there's, there's a lot of ways, and this comes from a parent having a kid in our schools and, and one who has already graduated. The, the school can play, and the city can help, play a vital role in maintaining that connectivity. The same digital divide that exists for our elderly exists for many of the kids who are in our schools. Our ability to have, for example, if we had Wi-Fi hotspots in the parking lots at libraries and parents could go there, there'd be an opportunity to get access to technology. If the city had an ability to create data access points in some of our really dense, multi-unit housing, there are lots of ways that the city could help partner with the schools to help bring up the, the youth in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Troutman.
Thank you. Building closer bridges between our school and our city was really a priority for me. And there's a former staff member at the city that initially told me, "What they do over there belongs over there, and it has nothing to do with what happens in the city." And so part of that is just changing the culture and the mindset, and I'm really proud of the work that we've done. One of the first fruits of the first meeting that, that I was able to convene between our school and our, our city staff has realized there are a lot of cross-communication opportunities that we have. So now when there are city services, we now can put those notices for those services in kids' backpacks. That's something we hadn't done before. And this might be, this might be a small thing, but I'm really proud of it. We now have the same color red. And I just think that's part of the fruit of the constant communication and growing closer is that as, as we, we rebranded, we've grown together, and we have, but we share, we share a color and we share an identity, and I think a stronger way. So whether it's services or just our identity is really important.
Thank you. And Ms. Onesra San.
What council has taught us, whatever you think is about COVID, whatever you think is safe today is not safe tomorrow. It's about time we start to err on the side of caution. I don't want my grandkids to be in schools today. Tomorrow, the monster virus will change and threaten us. I called the mayor because I couldn't get through, I couldn't get access to the public hearings or anything when I, when I wasn't on the web. And I said, "Put the, put the classes on television. Let's err on the side."
30 seconds.
Let's err on the side of caution for a change.
Thank you. I think we're on to the next question. "What do you see are Richfield's future challenges?" And first speaker is Mr. Whelan. I'm sorry, I misspoke. Mr. Vazeki.
So we do have aging infrastructure. And, and I think we're doing a good job of refurbishing the streets. And, and as mentioned, we're halfway through the, the full community mill and overlay, as well as some, some significant corridor reconstruction. So we're, we're taking care of those issues. But we do have, and although Center Point went through and replaced virtually all the gas lines in the entire city, water and sewer is still, is still an aging infrastructure piece. And although the roads look really nice after the mill and overlay, I, I think we're going to see an increase in the infrastructure upkeep for the subsurface areas.
Okay. Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
I think our basic, sorry, computer thing there. I think our basic challenge is to just maintain the forward momentum that we've had in an increasingly uncertain time. Obviously, COVID is front and center in that, but we know we have other things. We have the threat of climate change making storms more severe that is putting more pressure not just on our old infrastructure, but infrastructure that was never built for the climate we're going to be living in. On a sort of specific thing that I just want to take an opportunity to highlight is the threat of 494 work that Mindot is planning at Portland Avenue and 494, which threatens to wipe out housing and our entire business district in the area if those current plans go. So I think it's important for us to be able to advocate for Richfield, not just at a council meeting, but on a regional level, on a state level, to ensure that we're being treated fairly and that we're representing our residents' interests.
Thank you. Mr. Whelan.
Mr. Hayford O'Leary mentioned a couple of things I was going to mention, so I'll pick a couple of different ones. The, I do think housing is going to continue, and housing affordability is going to continue to be a huge one, that we, we have long been an affordable community. But of the 1,000 units that we've approved or are under construction right now, compared to the 4,500 we've already had, 1,000 new ones, only about, it's like 4% or 6% are affordable. And even that is out of reach for some people. So that's a big one. I also think, I think infrastructure-wise, we're doing fairly well, except for some of our rec buildings, the Community Center, which is really more of a senior center, and then the Nature Center. Those buildings are going to need improvements pretty quick here. And so we're going to have to talk as a community about what we want the future of those to look like and what we can afford to invest in those. And, and yeah, have some hard conversations around what that, what that looks like or generate some resolve for exciting conversations.
Thank you. Ms. Onesra San.
I'm kind of confused. What's the question again?
I'll repeat it. "What do you see are Richfield's future challenges?"
Well, I, I think I've said before, we've got to stop looking above ground and get down under the ground. We've got 10 years of chetachloroethylene pollution plus all kinds of other contaminants in our groundwater. We've got pipes that need to be replaced. There's nothing, believe me, I lived 13 years without running water. There's nothing more important, and we had cholera. So you've got all kinds of diseases if you don't have a good, clean, running water.
30 seconds.
So that's the most important thing that we have to do, and there's nothing else that's more important.
Thank you. And Mr. Troutman.
In agreement with what some of the candidates have pointed out, I think our infrastructure is a long-term, ongoing need that we have, both our roads and our, and our, our waterworks infrastructure. We do have some of the cleanest water in the state and one of the, the states that has some of the cleanest water in the country. It's a gem. It's incredible, and we are making those investments to make sure that they're great. In contrast to some of the other comments, I don't think the city council is preventing development from, from moving forward. We haven't stopped it. But making, making affordable housing, multifamily housing opportunities in our city has actually created opportunities for us to diversify our tax base, which will be and is a benefit to, to single-family homeowners.
Okay, thank you. And I think you were the last speaker on that question. At this point, we have five, or roughly a minute per person for a closing statement. And if I do another question, we're going to run out of time. So I want to thank you all for your very responsive and, what's the word, respectful answers. It was nice to watch a debate or a conference where people didn't speak over each other. So we thank you for that. At this point, I'm going to call on people in the following order. Mr. Troutman, you go first. Final speech, one minute.
Thank you. I just want to say it's been one of the great privileges of my life to serve a neighborhood I grew up in. I love this city. This has been a hard year. March already seems like a lifetime away ago, but as we face challenging and sometimes scary times, there's no other place that I'd rather be than Richfield. It's such a privilege to be here. I'm proud of our city. I'm proud of our staff that's changed so much of what they do, how they do it in a way that can be safe and compliant and still deliver incredible services, still have the farmer's market, still do the things that we love in Richfield. I'm really proud of our city, and I would ask for your vote and your support as you go to the polls in November, on November 13th, and vote early. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next speaker would be Mr. Vazeki.
Thank you. Again, this has been a great forum. Really appreciate the exchange of ideas. I, I too love this community. I, I wouldn't have been here for 20 years if I didn't. It's been a great place to raise a family. It's going to be a great place for future families to, to live. And, and I think there's, there's a tremendous benefit to our central location, not only the, the great water, but also, you know, we, we are so central to so much. And, and I think there are great opportunities for us to add more development so people can live closer to where they work and, and really have, have a, have a complete community in our little rectangle. And I'd appreciate your vote. Vote early, but not often.
Thank you. Mr. Hayford O'Leary.
Again, thank you to the League for doing this and to my fellow candidates. I agree. I think, I think we had a much more respectful thing than I imagine what we're referring to. I just want to say, in, in general, for me as a candidate, I want to say that what you see is what you get. You know what I'm about. The issues I've been focusing on are not new. They were not invented for this election. They're the issues that I have shown that I care about and that I've delivered on for the last eight years. So if you are driving or biking down 66th Street, Orlandale Avenue, and you see the beautiful new street and the development that has come and followed it, I was there and I helped advocate for that and make it happen. That's just one, one prominent example. I've made a difference in the physical form of our city. But if you read some of the endorsement statements about me, I've also made a difference in the lives of Richfielders and being available for neighbors and being a good source of information and being able to help them with their problems with their city. I'm ready to represent Ward 2, and I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Onesra San.
Don't float our elders out onto the, an ice block. We are not represented. We are underrepresented. We can be pushed out of our homes at a moment's notice. We can be told to get out of town. We can have them invade our neighborhood to the point where we're all nervous wrecks. This has got to stop. I, I will represent my elderly people. I will represent the people who don't want to do the web, okay?
30 seconds. Thank you. And finally, Mr. Whelan.
Thank you. I think, I'll just end by saying that politics is really meant to be, at its best, is about how we, as neighbors together, decide what we want our community to look like. And that politics is done best together. That, and so my goal, I'm running unopposed, but I still want to hear from you about what your vision is for our community, what you want to see. Reach out to me on my website, whelanforrichfield.com, or my cellphone and email are there too. But that we, I want to create a community that is for everyone, that actually serves everyone. I think equity issues are going to continue to be the biggest need, and I want to do that work with you. So I hope to talk to you soon, and thank you. Please vote. There's a few other important races on the ballot too, so make sure to vote for those as well.
Thank you to all our candidates, and I think maybe our chair would care to say something else. Susan.
Our tenants of the League of Women Voters, that the best voters are informed voters. And this is exactly the type of thing, this is what we want to accomplish. And I really thank you all for participating. It really makes a difference to our public. And I just thank you for your participation, and I want to wish you all good luck in your campaigns. And I'll see you all around the bend. So, but thanks to you again. Thanks to, to the two workers there, Sue Sandow and Karen Jenkins. They did a great job, and thank you all again. So, good night, and look for this on the web, because this is going to be, I'm sure people will be very interested in all your responses.
Susan, would you say again for the public where people can find it again?
My understanding is, is it's going to be up on the city website. The link will be up tomorrow. In fact, that, they're going to try to get it up certainly by Monday. Well, I don't have my calendar there. Today should be up by tomorrow, October 2nd, or it will be up by October 5th. So it'll be on the website. And then with also, this will be broadcast on Channel 16, which is the city's TV network, the TV channel. So we'll just have to wait until the staff gets it up on the, it'll be on the city's, the city web page. And I'm sure it'll be on the community Facebook as well, Richfield Community Web Facebook. And then the candidates can put it on their own websites and kind of, you know, show off what you did. Everybody answered so well. It was great. I learned a lot too, and I've been around here for 40 years, so. Right, thanks.
Thank you. Good night.